Hello and welcome to, and welcome candidates to this candidate forum. I'm Maggie Elliott, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for the forum. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any candidate or party. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters but to also provide them with information on issues to assist them, to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Join us. We can use your time and your talent. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, and our first questions will come from the League. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question, and there will not be time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for one hour. Near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. And the speaking order will be rotated throughout the forum. A League member, Kathy Eisenhower, is our timekeeper, and she will use cards to alert candidate when time is about up and when time is up. The election is scheduled for November 2nd, and early voting begins on October 13th. Requests for vote by mail ballots are currently accepted by the Johnson County Auditor's Office. We have three candidates running for two at-large seats on the Iowa City Council. Our candidates are Ms. Megan Alter, Mr. Jason Glass, Mr. Bruce Teague. There is one candidate running for District B, Mr. Sean Harmson. Let's begin with a two-minute opening statement, starting with our candidates for the at-large seat, Ms. Alter.
Sorry, I would like to just, I wanted to make sure that everyone can hear me. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to everyone who is watching on Zoom, as well as who made it here to show support and engagement for this process. We thank you all. So my name is Megan, and I am running for one of the at-large seats. I live in the South District with my husband, Dwayne, and my two children, one who goes to Alexander Elementary and the other to Southeast Junior High. Like many people, I moved here as a grad student and found my forever home. It was 25 years ago. Hard to imagine. But once I finished my PhD in English literature, I stayed and taught in the English Department and also in the Sexuality Studies Program. After a bit of time, I decided to focus elsewhere, and I now work at ACT and have for 12 years, where I am a senior manager in the English Language Division. So really, the big thing, question is, why are you running? The reason why is quite simple: to make a better normal. Whether it's for people now, five years from now, 10 years, or 20, we have a momentous opportunity to be able to effect change at a local level. And I have the experience in very specific ways in the community with deep roots in activities to know that local action can make change. I'm a two-term Housing and Community Development Commissioner. I am on the Leadership Committee for the South District Neighborhood Association. And what I'm very proud of is that I'm a co-founder of Neighborhood Nests, which were microhubs created to help students at risk and increasingly their families during COVID last year. It began as technological and educational support for students, but quickly we realized more wraparound service was needed to help with food insecurity, childcare, housing issues in fact, and certainly social and emotional support. Through all of these activities, what I have learned is the way that you can get things done is through enthusiasm, passion, determination, collaboration of course, and flexibility. I am very excited to talk about all of these and more throughout the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Glass.
Good evening, and I echo the thanks to, that Megan mentioned with, to the League of Women Voters and everybody watching tonight. I'm Jason Glass. I'm 45 years old and have lived in eastern Iowa all but three years of my life, and the last seven in Iowa City. I live on the east side with my wife of 20 years, my two daughters, and my Labrador Retriever. I'm currently Vice Chair of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission and a past member of the Iowa Human Rights Board. I'm a musician. I met my wife here in the Hawkeye Marching Band, and I've been involved with local theater. I spent 20 years in human resources for several local companies, making workplaces safer, more welcoming, and more equitable. I investigated and resolved dozens of harassment and discrimination issues. I helped managers be better people leaders, manage their budgets, and balance all the needs of business. I now teach HR and leadership courses at the University of Iowa. I led a nonprofit called Professional and Technical Diversity Network that held events to welcome a more diverse workforce to the corridor, and I've worked with many nonprofits as a volunteer. I'm a 27-year member of the Iowa National Guard's 34th Army Band, where I'm a saxophone player, the drum major for the marching band, and an equal opportunity leader. All these experiences have involved working through challenges and solving problems with a diverse group of people. My dad was a firefighter and fire chief, and I've worked for my local park and rec department and wastewater treatment plant when I was in college, so I did some dirty jobs. And I have an appreciation for the work that goes on to really make our city run and that fails to get recognized all too often. I'm running because I love Iowa City, and I believe it's a pretty great place, and I think that gets lost in the discussion of where we fall short and where we need to improve. I want to help everyone feel that as fully as I do, and I want to bring my diverse experiences, my nonpartisan approach to problem solving to help make this an even better place. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Teague.
Hello, and again, thanks for this opportunity to allow voters to be informed. I think it's pretty critical in this day and age where, especially in the time of COVID, where we're not able to meet, so happy to know that we have the Zoom option. As many of you know, I am mayor of Iowa City, and I have been on council since 2018. So four years have I been on council, and I'll tell you a little bit about my work on council throughout some of the questions, I'm sure some of that had come up. But I wanted to take a moment just to kind of reintroduce myself to those within our community and also introduce myself to some of those that haven't totally been informed or paid much attention to some of the leadership here at council. So I've been in Iowa City 29 years. I went to West High School, a graduate from there. I also went to Kirkwood and the University of Iowa, so I've been in this community a long time. One thing I'll tell you about being in Iowa City is a place to easy, to love. It's an easy place to love. I'm an entrepreneur, and some of the work that I do on, on the council, I have a greater understanding of what it really means to live and survive in Iowa City. Lived experience means a lot. I am, I had been a recipient of some of the social services within our community, Section 8, as many people know, and some food services, so I know the needs of many within our community. And one thing that I'll tell you is that I'm dedicated to hearing all voices within this community and figuring out solutions together.
Thank you. And now we hear opening statements from our District B candidate, Mr. Harmson.
Thank you. Good evening and hello. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Johnson County for organizing this forum. Excuse me. My name is Sean Harmson, and I am running for the District B seat on the Iowa City Council, which means I live in the district, but everybody in the city votes on that seat, and so I humbly ask for your vote this fall. A little bit about me: I'm a former radio and TV journalist. For several years, when our kids were little, I was a stay-at-home dad and a part-time adjunct. I came to Iowa City in 2010 to work on a PhD, and like Megan, I fell in love with the idea of raising my family here in Iowa City. I finished that in 2016, the PhD, not living in Iowa City, and have been teaching ever since at Co College in Cedar Rapids. I am also a community activist, political volunteer, Little League coach, the household chef, and a full partner in the mom-and-dad taxi service for our two teenagers. And while who I am as a person is vitally important to consider as you decide how you will vote in an election, understanding the public policy values of a candidate are at least as critical. And like the saying goes, actions speak louder than words. Since coming back to Iowa, I have volunteered, knocked doors, spoken out for, and even helped run some of the campaigns for people and groups that support things such as racial equity, the dignity of workers and their right to organize and bargain, that support the idea that same-sex couples have the right to marry the person they love and to live without discrimination, people that believe housing is a human right. And I have fought on the side of people and groups that support science, that welcome immigrants, that believe Black Lives Matter. In the same time, I have fought against the people and groups who have worked to take away rights from the LGBTQ community, who have struck down our local minimum wage increase, have stripped away tons of bargaining rights from our public workers, and attacked the public education system, and who have shifted the burden of funding our local communities from wealthy commercial property owners to homeowners. Personality is very important, but at the end of the day, this job is also about policy. My name is Sean Harmson, and I humbly ask for your vote as the candidate for City Council, District B.
Thank you. We will now proceed to questions. Recall that you have one minute to respond to each question. And our first question goes to Mr. Glass. What motivated you to run for City Council?
Great question. My, really, I've thought about running or, and serving in elected office for a while. What really made the final decision for me was my work on the Human Rights Commission over the last year. I've been pretty heavily involved with some of the discussions around the protests after the death of George Floyd last year. I wrote the, I was the lead author on the statement for Black Lives Matter that the Human Rights Commission put out, and I've had several conversations with the current City Council on, on many of those issues. And having been involved in some of those conversations so much, it really got me even more engaged in, in city work. And so I, from that work, I really thought I could make, I could make an even greater difference in some of the work that I've already started with, with the Human Rights Commission and many of my other experiences to, to bring that to council.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So I actually thought that council was another way to serve the community. And so for me, it's more of a way to serve. I am a part of the LGBTQ plus community, African-American, and it is important that a voice of one with lived experience is so important to be a part of the policymaking within this great city. Our city has grown 13, I'm sorry, 10%, you know, with the last census. And I think it's very critical that we continue to not only talk about our values but make sure that there is someone at the table that have lived experience that can really represent the people within this community.
Thank you. Mr. Harmson?
Thank you. Actually, I hadn't always thought I would, I would serve in an elected position. I was on the other side out in the audience, covering stories as a journalist and working as an activist. It just kind of came about this spring, that it looked like there was an opportunity and a place to fill, to step up and do kind of some of the same kinds of service that I had been doing in this community for years, but from a different position. And so decided that there was time to, to step forward and help carry the load that others had been already carrying.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Yes. So some of you may remember, I ran in 2018, and at that time, I talked about wanting to make Iowa City accessible and enjoyable for everyone who lives here. And I will tell you that I have that sense of urgency even more now with the kind of tumult that we've gone through, and yet all that is so wonderful about Iowa City. And I feel that this is truly a moment where local action can make a difference. And I'm here to be an advocate for change that makes a difference in people's daily lives. That's really the thing that moves me, and it did three years ago, and it does even more now. I'm not a believer in metrics on a checklist, making sure that bullets get done or an action plan is done unless it's felt by the people who live in the community. The work that I've been doing for years is something that gratifies me greatly, but I'm really ready to take it to a level at a policy, at a policy level, to be able to enact certain measures with the input of residents, to be able to make sure that Iowa City truly is as inclusive as we want it to be.
Thank you. Our next question: How would you foster a positive working relationship with the mayor and other council members to ensure that community concerns are being met? And that goes to Mr. Teague.
Well, I have experienced here over the past year, I think, when we were talking about mask mandates as well as other things to make sure that everyone in our community is heard, you have to ensure that you're working side by side in a collaborative effort to allow counselors to come together to work through any issue that's, that's been faced our way. When we're talking about COVID and the, the potential lives that have been lost or could be lost, those are hard conversations to have. Black Lives Matter movement, I have to say that that was hard work, not hard work. And it continues today where we are doing that hard work, and it takes a lot of collaboration. We're going to be talking about zoning here on council, and it's going to be important that we really collaborate and, and as a counselor, you want to make sure that you're respectful and allow others to be heard as well, and so I've done that.
Thank you. Mr. Harmson?
Thank you. I think that's very important, the things that Mayor Teague was just talking about, the, the ability to work together and to, to come together and pull together when you have to, but also to have that space to disagree respectfully. And I think that's something that, knowing the members of the council, that even if we don't always agree on anything, and that's going to be typical for any two people, you won't always agree on everything, but be able to disagree in a way that is respectful and that you are all sharing the same goal of making Iowa City a better place.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
One of the things that I've actually appreciated the most about council right now is the fact that we do see this in action. Council members are not in lockstep, and I appreciate the way in which even in a public forum, they are able to navigate difference of opinion and indeed actually work to bring different facets and perspectives together that an individual counselor may not have. And I think that that's the strength of being able to disagree. I think it's the strength that creates better decision-making. So as far as I'm concerned, certainly, listening to one another is a key, but there also has to be a sense of flexibility coming from within a counselor. You may come in with a decision and think and believe that this is the right thing to do, but if that's where you're at and you're not swayed by anyone else's argument because you've already made up your mind, then that doesn't help. So I certainly appreciate the fact that the counselors have modeled the behavior of being able to talk and come to a consensus while disagreeing respectfully.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
Well, collaboration is what I've done in so many different parts of, of my career, whether it's the National Guard or in my human rights work or in companies, where we've had a broad spectrum of people that don't always agree or that don't always have the same worldview or political views. And I've always found that I could bring those people together to have conversations. I find that I'm a little different than many, that my, my social media feed, for instance, is that while many people narrow it down to a group of folks that mostly agree with them, I've done the opposite. I've always tried to expand that. I have, I have friends and respected colleagues that span the political spectrum from the far right to the far left, and my, the people that are supporting me in this race are, you know, kind of reflect that as well. And I've found that in all cases, I can, I can nearly always find some area of agreement with them on something. And I think that part of that is how we are respectful with each other, and what I have found that even if there's somebody that I disagree with 95% of the time, and it's, and it's sometimes very adamantly 95% of the time, that that still leaves a window of 5% opportunity that I can find an area of agreement or we can get something done to the benefit of Iowa City. And I forfeit that 5% opportunity if the, if I, if I denigrate them or I call them nasty names with another 95%, and so I don't do that.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the audience. Everyone claims to support affordable housing, but given the incredibly high and rising cost of housing in Iowa City, what specific policy would you champion to reduce costs for the thousands of renters who cannot really afford to live where they currently do? And that question will go to Mr. Harmson.
One minute, huh? So first of all, I think some of the stuff the city has already been doing is, is making some positive change, using pools of funds to rehab homes and, and get people into home ownership. I also think with some of the, the things that have been done with, discussed, coming up with the Form-Based Code will help some of that. We are somewhat limited as a city by some of the things the state has pushed upon us, things we can't do, like rent control and other things like even just, you know, taking more of, more of a hand. But we still need to be leaders in the city, and we need to step up against predatory landlords. My own family has dealt with this, as a predatory out-of-state investor has come in, bought up the mobile home court where she lives in North Liberty, and jacked up the rent 60%, you know, in a, in a very short amount of time. And so we've been fighting back against that, but having that as the passion of knowing what the impact can be will be that sort of my guiding principle in trying to explore every possible option to make affordable housing a real thing. And it's really hard to answer that in one minute.
And your minute is up.
It is up.
Ms. Alter?
I agree that there are several programs in the city that are working or are helping in many ways. The home ownership program that Sean mentioned, I'm actually on the Housing and Community Development Commission that first saw the proposal and offered some improvements for it that the city then took into account so that the residents could have first dibs on it. And I live in the South District, and so that's on Taylor, and the city has recently expanded that program. I would love to see that actually happen, not just in the South District, but the possibility of being able to turn renters into homeowners throughout the city is a phenomenal way to actually attack both affordable housing as well as equity issues and economic ones. Additionally, I believe in partnering with the experts, and we have a number of local ones. The Housing Fellowship already rehabs homes and works to create affordable housing for people who are at lower LMI, or are, sorry, AMI. My bad. And then finally, I would also say that I'm excited about the possibility of Form-Based Code that, again, is happening in the South District. What I would encourage as a counselor is for this to expand so that we can think about affording, affordable housing throughout all of Iowa City.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
I'd echo, I think, some of the programs that we have in Iowa City, we're, we're already doing a lot of really great things, I think, especially in relation to a lot of other places in the state. I worked for Four Oaks, which is a nonprofit based in Cedar Rapids, is statewide, that, as on the executive team, and, which included the Affordable Housing Network in Cedar Rapids. And I was there and watched as they, as they did a project in Wellington Heights as a neighborhood in Cedar Rapids, where they, they really rehabbed that neighborhood. And what I, what I learned from that is that affordable housing is not just, not just programs where we help with, with, with rent or with, you know, with, with cost, but we have to surround people with services because there's the reasons, a lot of the reasons why that they're struggling to afford those homes or the, or that rent are all the other things that need to go on in their lives: childcare, transportation, mental health, and substance abuse. And if we miss some of the spokes of that wheel, then it doesn't work. And so what I would want to bring to council is a collaborative approach where we're, we're bringing all those agencies together to make sure that we're supporting people, getting them into their, into that housing, but then surrounding them with services so they can be successfully, and stay successfully in those, in those units.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
There is a lot to talk about on this item, but I think the question is what policy can be changed? And I think that right now, the council has gathered a group to talk about affordable housing plan. I'm looking forward to that group coming with some newer innovative ideas. One thing that I know is in place right now, we're talking about, in, in certain districts within our community, where there is the affordability period, sometimes it's a 20-year period, and that's a challenge because if there is a, you know, a person that is moving in there where the period only has five more years to, or 10 more years to go, they move in when they're five, at the age of, you know, when they, if they have 10 more years, at the age of 15, they have to move to somewhere affordable. So there's a lot that goes into this, but I will also say partnerships are important, and also people that own property in Iowa City, this are, these are the rents that you are signing up for. You hear the needs. Council should not have to always beg a developer or a landlord to do what is right by the people in this community.
Thank you. Another question from the community: In 2020, the City Council unanimously defeated a proposal from Mid-American Energy for a 19-acre solar farm in Waterworks Park at no cost to the city. Was this the correct decision? Will you support such future proposals, and what other ways can Iowa City and its partners take big strides towards accomplishing its climate action plan? And this goes to Ms. Alter.
Thank you for that question. I feel that, due respect, I feel that was an incredibly large mistake, and I know that it was a popular decision at the time, but I think it was an incredible missed opportunity to not put the solar farm there. And I wrote a letter to the council supporting that farm at the time. The urgency of climate action, of climate change is something that we can't think of as a headline that we read about. It's happening in our community as well. And so certainly, I will be an advocate for looking for bold climate change. I think, given that we don't have that opportunity anymore, I'm still pushing for solar panels on all of the municipal buildings, but I'm also in favor of changing a mindset within the community. It's not something good to do or something extra to do. This has to be embedded in the fabric of how we live our daily lives. I have several thoughts on that, but I will stop now.
Mr. Glass?
It's, it's, it can be tough calls with these things. I mean, I think the debate between those two things was green space and, and leaving some open prairie land versus developing it essentially with solar panels. But I, I agree with, with Megan that I would, I disagree with the decision the council made. I would have supported the solar, the solar farm in that area because, for very much the same reasons. And I, I also think that that's an area where we could use some of our American Rescue Plan funds to invest in, in our climate plan. I think we could really accelerate some of the things that are already going on there, and maybe this is a way to resurrect some of, some of, some of that work and maybe that specific project.
Teague? Sorry?
Yes, thank you. So for me, this is more of a, what is council doing to really meet our, our climate emergency that we claimed in 2019, I believe, is when we claimed that? What is council doing to ensure that by 2030 that there's 45% decrease? And then in 2050, we're looking at, you know, 100%? So that's really what I'm thinking about, and what are some of the initiatives that I heard? You know, what can council do? We, we've put out $50,000 grants for people to exercise opportunities that will really make an impact in our climate. But it, it really does go beyond just one site, because any site can be a great site or not a great site, but it really comes down to where will the council really begin to make great plans? We have a commission that is working hard, and I really do believe that as time go on, this commission will continue to present great opportunities for the, to the council and for this community.
Thank you. Mr. Harmson?
Thank you. This is actually one of those issues that sometimes my, around our kitchen table, my kids are very concerned about this. They're, they're teenagers, they watch the news, they see how bad the climate situation is, they're watching every other day something about a new hurricane, a new flood, or a hurricane causing a blizzard in Greenland, for goodness sakes. And sometimes like, you know, they, they, they're angry, they're scared, they're upset, and so this has to be a priority. It's a shame that the city wasn't able to find in this, this proposed thing a way to meet both the desire to have a, the green space, which is a nice green space out there, and to go ahead and protect all the green spaces and all of, all of the earth at the same time. Absolutely. Everything we can do, if it's, it's solar panels on buildings, I know that, or even our transportation, by, by working on things of transportation, I believe that Iowa City has the first four electric buses either about to come online or have just come online. So that's the kind of thing we need to do and get the bugs worked out of that system and get, get going on that kind of stuff, because we need to make change and we need to make it now.
Thank you. Johnson County law enforcement has shown that they're unable to responsibly use military-grade equipment. Given the same officer's access to a Bearcat, an alternative to the current MRAP will likely result in even more police abuse in the community. My question for the candidate is this: If elected to the City Council, will you pledge to keep these tanks out of Iowa City neighborhoods? And we'll start with Mr. Glass.
Earlier this year, in North Liberty, there was a, an active shooter that was flaying police and ran into a business. My, my two daughters were at dance practice about two blocks away, and they had to evacuate the rec center and the daycare that was across the street because he was actively firing at, at law enforcement. And thankfully, none of them were hit. The MRAP, or the armored vehicle that we currently have, was staged in the area so that in case they needed to rescue someone or apprehend someone before something much worse happened, they had that available. Thankfully, the law enforcement was able to negotiate with, with the shooter and apprehend him without use of the vehicle. But I was very glad that we, that, that that was there in case he had, in case there had been somebody else in that building as a hostage, or he had chosen to go across the street with all those children. building as a hostage, or he had chosen to go across the street where all those children were. We absolutely need to have guidelines for how we use that kind of equipment. We absolutely should have oversight afterward to make sure that it's used properly. But it's a tool that we need in our toolbox to respond to these very dangerous situations.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So I'm very passionate about this item because I know that this has caused some challenges within the community on its use and where it's been used, which has been majority within the South District, where people of color live. So for me, there's a couple of things. We, as you mentioned, there's been gun violence in our community, so there's been an increase. As well as, when something happened, what will be the tools that we have in the toolbox to keep everyone safe? The officers are there for safety, to ensure that whatever they're going in for is going to be the lowest incident possible. At times, there is a great reason for that device to be used. I've said this on council. I've said it again. The big, big tank, we don't need. I think we need some more solutions, and we're kind of waiting on the county. So I would say people tune in as we continue this conversation.
Mr. Harmsen?
Thank you. Well, I think, first of all, two things can coexist simultaneously. One, we want to keep our community and our police officers safe from harm, and that militarization of police forces is a net negative for keeping our community safe and for keeping police officers safe. In fact, that's even something I believe was even in the BLM document, concerns about the militarization of police forces. Like Mayor Teague, I think the more that we use any sort of tools that look like something that's going to be approaching a battlefield, the less it belongs in our communities. Luckily, there might be some other options out there, vehicles which can provide that armored protection without looking like it's rolling up, you know, to take over and start a firefight with insurgents in the middle of a neighborhood in Iowa City. So I think we're working through the process now. The county and the city are working through the process. I'm watching it very closely and also doing a lot of studying and talking to people on the side. But I think we have to be able to meet all of these goals to really be accomplishing the goals of public safety for everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
So as I mentioned in my introduction, and as Mayor Teague has talked about, the South District is often a focal point, and I live there. I live a block away from where the MRAP was, and indeed, it feels like a militarized tank. At the same time, that it is there for protection, and this is something that the police have said often, it is for their own protection, it is also for the protection of the residents. It does not appear that way. It appears threatening. We have a lot of kids in the area. There has been no warning when these have come through for reasons I understand in theory, but the reality of seeing something that looks like a tank come down your street when that's not what it's intended for is very frightening. So I am not in favor of the MRAP, actually. I do think that we need to find something for the officers to be safe. I, in fact, know that Counselor Thomas has done a little bit of research, and he sent a document to Sean Harmsen where the armored vehicle that would protect residents and the police looks like an Amazon Prime vehicle. I think we need to keep looking.
Thank you. Thank you. Iowa City has been ranked as one of the most income segregated cities in the country. How can the city council help to better diversify our neighborhoods? And we'll start with Mr. Teague.
This past year, we saw houses for sale flying off the racks. We're a college town, and the prices in our community are extremely high. And you're exactly right. How do we bring resolution to making sure that people live where they want to live? It is really through zoning. That is how council can create policies that ensure that we have affordability or different things within every part of our community. And now that the council is really looking at zoning, this is a focal point that we must ensure, is something that we're talking about.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen?
Thank you. I agree. This is definitely something that the council has already started the process of, and I look forward to continuing and contributing to that, looking at things like form-based code. I think those that have studied zoning knows that, know that for decades, the way that zoning has been handled in communities has only exacerbated this problem, if not intentionally caused it. So I'm glad that the city's moving in that direction, and I'm encouraged by that. There's some other things out there on the horizon we have to keep our eyes open for. I mentioned what had happened to my mom up in North Liberty. There are also private equity firms that are busy buying up not just rental properties and mobile home courts, but private homes. And that way, they can use them in causing, you know, jacking up artificially the cost of homes, creating barriers for homeowners and people who want to start off even rental properties and things like that. So we have to keep our eyes open and aware of those kinds of threats and meet them when they come, but I also think that we're doing some stuff with what we can do with zoning to make this a better situation.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Like the others, I absolutely agree that planning and zoning is going to be key. In fact, again, on the south side of town, there is form-based code that is coming into play that I think is going to create a really interesting neighborhood with mixed units, single-family dwellings, multifamily, but yet creating a very robust neighborhood feel that will also help bring costs down because they won't be sprawling, single-dwelling units. But something else that I would like to talk about is the fact that we need to also attend to the health of retail in the city because you're not going to have a thriving neighborhood if you have pockets where there's nothing but single dwelling and where if you have multi-units all clustered together, then you're not creating the kind of diversity of neighborhood that would allow for additional, more affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
I'd echo some of these things, too. Obviously, zoning is a big part of that, and I also agree that we need to be more friendly to retail and development. And I think that Iowa City has rightfully or wrongfully developed a reputation for not being as friendly to development as it should be. The other thing I'd mention is that I think, what piece that I didn't hear from the rest of them that I think I'd add is around schools. Because the diversity of neighborhoods really comes through, you know, the schools. And even though we don't have direct, you know, impact on that, zoning has a huge impact on the diversity of our schools. And that's a big chunk of how we integrate those neighborhoods. So I would want to work very closely with the school board on, you know, their plans and their diversity plans and how they work with school boundaries and collaborate with them on zoning to make sure that we're doing that together.
Thank you. What specific actions would you recommend to address social or racial inequalities in Iowa City? We'll start with Mr. Harmsen.
Well, I think one of the things we do is we continue to support the process of the groups like the TRC, the Human Relations, Human Relations, I'm sorry, the other sorts of councils and commissions in the city, and look to them to be part of the solution. I think another part of the solution, as we make sure that we allow people who are in the day-to-day to center their stories, that those of us who are white in the community are also willing to step up and help carry some of that load. We should not expect people in traditionally and historically disenfranchised groups to do all of that work. We need to step up and be taking our part, doing that work, but not stepping in and taking over that work. We need to stand with people, not for them and not in front of them.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Can you repeat the specific question?
What specific actions would you recommend to address social or racial inequalities in Iowa City?
Thank you. I would echo heartily what Mr. Harmsen said. However, I would also add to it, I'm a very practical person, and so, again, I have to say that we need to attend to the health of all of Iowa City. And Jason Glass talked about development and how somehow that's gotten a bad reputation. We can leave that for another question, but I would definitely say that the South District is in a retail desert, which disenfranchises and makes daily life difficult for residents in the South District. So I would like to have practical solutions for helping solve for equity and racial and social opportunity to, so that we do not have to make life on a daily basis more difficult. That really is what equity is all about, is about providing people an opportunity to have, to be able to move forward in a way that many of us don't have to worry about.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
Well, this is a lot of the work that I've done in my career with being on the Human Rights Commission, as well as the State Human Rights Board. And a lot of my volunteer work has been in that area, too. So even in my professional career, as I mentioned, I've been involved with investigating and resolving a lot of, you know, harassment and discrimination claims. And I've terminated people from companies for behaving in ways that, you know, were inconsistent with those values. And I've volunteered to help people who have barriers to employment, like formerly incarcerated, so have done work with their resumes or helped them with interview help and tried to support them in ways to get them, you know, back integrated into the community. I also support the work of the TRC. That was mentioned. And I think a lot of the work that's being done, it has to be done through our neighborhood groups, like Black Voices Project, the South District Neighborhood Association, and listening to them on what policy things we can do from the city council level to help support them.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So there is a lot to this question because we have the LGBTQ+ community. We have trans individuals that are really looking for equality. We have black voices within this community, and we saw last year Asian hate, right? We experienced this as not only a community but as a nation. And we also have parents, single moms and women, that are having some challenges, and Meagan talked about, just opportunities for businesses. So there's a lot going on in our community. And what I would say is this, is it's so important that we individually do what we can to support and uplift those individuals that are having challenges. When you think about a single mom that might have three children, trying to find work and manage her children, that's a challenge. And I think the childcare within our community is also, we're in the deficit. So there's a lot to this question, and I would say it starts individually.
Thank you. The city of Iowa City was allocated 18.3 million in federal funds provided by the American Rescue Plan Act. What criteria would you suggest to use in deciding how to spend this money? How do you feel we can best help our community recover from the effects of COVID-19? And we'll start with Ms. Alter.
I was at the city council meeting when the Catholic Workers' House individuals were there and many others who were talking about the Excluded Workers Fund. And it was also when there was the proclamation about equity. And so I was very struck by what the translator, when she was able to speak for herself about why she felt it was so important for the excluded workers to get funding, direct aid funding. And I have to concur. I think that if we, as a city, want to become more inclusive, we have to do it in a way that's concrete. And so for me, criteria for that first batch of pushing out money would, in fact, go to making sure that the people who were not attended to during COVID and yet who attended to us would be taken care of.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
Well, I said, on the day that I announced my campaign in May, that the first priority for me was to make sure that people who were excluded from the federal payments that most all of us had received through pandemic relief, that the people that were left out of that should be our first priority to make sure to take care of them. We, I wrote a statement on behalf of the Human Rights Commission that was later adopted, and I went on local television a couple weeks ago to say that we believe, and I believe, that those that have been left behind should get direct cash payments, including the undocumented, the formerly incarcerated, and that should be done without means testing and those kind of things because the rest of us that received those funds weren't means tested either. So I think that needs to be a priority, and I think we should use some of those funds immediately. In fact, we probably should have already done it by now to help with them. Beyond that, I think the rest of the funds, we've mentioned several of the things that we could support, so accelerating our climate plan and do neighborhood building and development in some of these areas, too.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So this is live and in action for me because we just talked about this on council, and it's what they just mentioned. Giving funds to those that weren't a part of the stimulus, that's what the council is looking at right now, which I'm very proud of. There's all other things that the council is looking at, but I think the central thing for me is making sure that it goes to the people. It has a direct impact to individuals. There was a proposal for us to give it to infrastructure or for some of the programs within our departments. Right now, I think that that doesn't need to be a topic that we need to focus on. There is infrastructure money that is potentially going to be coming from the federal government. There's other opportunities. I think this will be a little change in of what we'll be able to do because the governor mentioned $100 million in, that will actually help existing housing programs as well as talk about new creations of programs. And I think it's going to be a little bit of a moving target, but as a community, we'll get through it together.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen?
This is definitely one of those times, I think, we're all on the same page, where we really want to take care of those who have been hit the hardest and have had the least ability to bounce back first, and we need to make that the priority. Agree with everything that's been said about that up here. I think, too, as we look at where, as Mayor Teague has said, as we look at sort of the bigger picture, what other sorts of funds might be coming down the line, that could also inform us and hopefully give us more ability to work through some of the immediate needs that people have in order to keep their heads above water, keep their families in shelter, and everybody fed in the household. I think, depending on how that goes, as we start to look at other things, then we can start to look at, like, how might affordable housing play into this issue? How might transportation play into this issue? So once we meet those immediate needs, we can start looking at medium-term, medium-time-length types of needs and maybe even longer-term needs, but we have to take care of the primary and the short-term needs, the emergency needs first for the people.
Thank you. Our final question: What is one issue we have not discussed this evening that you think is important for Iowa City? And we'll start with Mr. Glass.
I'm going to try to squeeze in two. One, it was briefly mentioned, but the increase in shootings in Iowa City has not been talked about. We've spent a lot of time talking about the MRAP or armored vehicle and what that looks like, which we use very rarely. But we've had, in the last year and a half, we've had over 80 shots fired calls from the ICPD, including 460 rounds fired, 22 people hit, including five homicides. And I think it's a disservice that we've spent so much time talking about, you know, some issues of law enforcement and that we have not spent enough time talking about how we collaborate and bring people together on solutions for that. The other one, I, well, I'm going to leave it at that. I think that that's a critical issue that we need to be talking about at the council level and bringing together not just law enforcement, and maybe not even primarily law enforcement, to discuss how we can help prevent and work through those because it's a critical issue facing the safety of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
Opportunity, opportunity, opportunity for all. I think we've touched base on it on some level, but the city can play a major role in ensuring through social equity and all this other stuff. But opportunity for all really does mean that each one in the community can play a role. When I think about a small business owner, that might be a minority business owner that has special products, oftentimes, I think we rely on people within that group to go and purchase items. But if we want to lift up people, go stop by the store and find out what items are in there that you can purchase and you can use or you can learn about. I think that there are opportunities for all of us, but we do have to contribute in some manner to make sure that we all excel in this community.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen?
I think from the perspective of somebody on the council, one of the things that we haven't talked about is, or maybe actually, we've talked about it in various ways. As Jason said, sometimes we've touched on some of these things. How can we get out there and can we affect change through our policy? How can we get out there and hear from the people and help them decide as to make change? How do we support policies that do things like address things like the violence, gun violence? How do we do things that increase opportunity? How do we help workers bargain for a better, you know, even for the city, have bargained for better rights and make sure we're protecting workers in the city? So these are things that I think are very important. We talk about economic development. How do we do that in a way that spreads around the entire city and brings those kinds of opportunities to all corners of our city or, you know, to every part, every precinct of our city? And so how do we make sure that we do that, that we grow well and that we grow smartly and that we make sure that all of these opportunities translate to everybody being able to enjoy Iowa City the same?
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Well, the question actually took my ending comments, so I'll just try and squish it in a minute. It was touched on very briefly by Mayor Teague, but childcare, it's something that I ran on before. It's something that absolutely touches on the three prongs of what makes a strong community: equity, economy, and the community itself. Too often, this is considered a woman's issue, and as you might have noticed, I'm the only woman on the dais, and I appreciate that the mayor brought it up. But I've also been in several childcare initiative collaborations with the Iowa City Area Chamber, with Iowa Women's Foundation, and with with Iowa Women's Foundation, and with several public and private partnerships. It's an incredibly complex question, and I've, in fact, been told, this is so big that we can't really deal with it at a local level, and I adamantly disagree, because this is not just a woman's issue, it's not just a family issue, it hits every single part of our community. It's an economic issue, it is also a community issue, it's an education issue. This is something that I truly believe that if we can attack this, we actually will make some great dents in the work that we're trying to combat.
Thank you. Now for closing statements. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement, and we will begin with Mr. Harmson, the candidate for District B on the Iowa City Council.
Thank you. And we've been here tonight, and I, first of all, want to say thank you again to the League of Women Voters of Johnson County for setting up this forum. I would like to say thank you to everybody else up here on this dais tonight and for being willing to run and being willing to be leaders in the community, for all the good and all the bad that that takes, and for all the work and effort that it takes to run a campaign. So thank you to all of those. Thank you also to those people who came here tonight, who have been watching tonight or will be watching a recorded version of this. It takes a lot to make a democracy work, and voting is key, but that's just the beginning of the story. And so I just want to say thank you to those of you who are putting in that work. It is good, it is noble, and it is necessary work, and I hope you will continue to do so in the weeks ahead. We think we're only about seven weeks away from the election. Again, my name is Sean Harmson, and I'm running in District B, which means it's a residency requirement, but the entire city votes on every seat, so I, again, humbly ask for your vote in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
Thanks also to the League of Women Voters for putting on the forum and for the other candidates for participating. Our time was limited tonight, but you can see more detailed responses to many of these issues on my Facebook page and the blog on my website. During the floods of 2008, I was called up to state active duty as part of the National Guard. I was gone, actually, during my first Father's Day, as a matter of fact. On my first day of duty, I happened to be sent to Iowa City, where we were tasked with building a barrier around the power plant by the river. And I was riding on a Green Army bus, and we were coming up Burlington Street, and I happened to look down Madison Street, and it was full of students that were hard at work, filling sandbags, trying to save all the buildings that they care for so much, and I was an undergrad here as well, so I get it. But then I looked up Burlington, and I saw a parade of residents that were coming out of neighborhoods and had work gloves in their hand and shovels, and they were coming to help. And that's when I knew this was my town. And I still, you can tell, I still get a little choked up telling this story. I had a similar sentiment after the tornado in 2006 and the derecho last year. It didn't matter whose sign was in your yard or what you thought of the mask mandate, it was neighbor helping neighbor, and I know that we can activate that spirit for other problems to solve. I'm blessed to have a wonderful family and friends, I have a wide variety of experiences in many sectors of the community, of human rights, nonprofits, business, music and theater, and the National Guard. I've had a successful professional career where I've tackled tough issues and had tough conversations, and I'm not afraid to take on the tough issues and tough conversations that we need to have happen in order to take Iowa City forward. And I've done that by building positive relationships with a wide spectrum of people. I promise to bring that issue-by-issue approach to city council, and I ask for your support and vote in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So I've been on council again for four years, and I think the work that I've done speaks for me. This past year has been a year that we'll all agree has been unprecedented, unexpected, and we're continuing in many of the challenges even today. When I think about the last year specifically, the social justice opportunities that we've had, and remember, I think of that as hard work, not hard work. So the opportunities that we've had through just coming together as a community and talking, having hard conversations. My niece, who was in high school, prior to the loss of George Floyd, said, "Uncle, they know that there's racism here, but nobody want to talk about it." Guess what? We're talking about it now, and I'm so happy we're talking about it. It's a hard conversation, but we're going to get through it. There are so many things happening within our community. We're talking about climate change, we need to move with urgency, and I feel that I am really pushing the buttons here through policy and making sure that we're doing what we can. When we're talking about zoning, it does make a difference where people live and how we create opportunity, as well as making sure that people can experience life wherever they want to in this city. Zoning matters. Transit, and we have bikes, and we have cars, and we have buses. Well, we need to think about very strategically, how do we make sure that we're moving around in our community in the most smart manner? And one thing I'll say is that through all of this past year, what I've learned, COVID has really brought about a change. I had to wait to get married, because, and there's more real stories that are more drastic than me waiting to get married, but this past year, I hope you've seen my hard work and the dedication that I have to this community. I do have the experience to unite.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming today, and especially for the League of Women Voters, for putting this on in the middle of a lot of activities, and it's difficult to do the logistics, so thank you very much for that. I think I'm going to have what's known as a kitchen-sink ending, because I really liked the question that was brought up before about what hasn't been talked about, but I want to model it in the way that I plan to be a counselor, should you vote for me, and I certainly hope that you will. I mentioned before, I'm a very concrete type of person, but I'm also very proactive, and so I can guarantee you that I will be a counselor who will bring things to the agenda proactively, to say, these are things we need to work on, rather than to wait for it to appear on our agenda. I absolutely agree with Jason Glass that we need to get to some root causes about talking about gun violence. I've been volunteering and working with Moms Demand Action for a couple of years now, and I really believe that some common guns sense, community activism is a page that we can take and incorporate as council members and raise the issue to a municipal level, because, once again, this is a community issue, not just a police issue or a victim issue. This affects all of us in many ways. Additionally, I mentioned it, I kind of squeezed it in, a little bit of a pivot there, but I'm really staunch and determined about getting the right kind of retail development in the South District and in the adjacent East Side. I don't want it gentrified. We have an amazing, diverse, and inclusive neighborhood. I want it to be right-sized for the area, and I want that kind of attitude to proliferate throughout the city. We have amazing pockets, and we've done quite well. The north side has its own flavor. The near north side, sorry, the north side, the east side, each of those have kind of their own type of personality. The South District is actually pretty big. It's broad, it's diverse and wonderful, but there is nothing there for us to work with in terms of essentials. I have mentioned this before, I buy my socks at the waterfront Hy-Vee. If you want to buy underwear, you have to go all the way across town or take your Iowa City dollars and go put them in Coralville. This is something that, as a counselor, I will be incredibly passionate and determined about.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates and to the City of Iowa City Channel 4 Television staff. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, or on the website of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County at l w v j c dot org. It will also be cablecast on Channel 4. Check their website for scheduling. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidate, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. The election will be held November 2nd. Please vote. Remember to visit vote411.org for more election information, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Zoom wave.